Everybody, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance implies that the United States of America is a republic for which it stands one nation in God, indivisible, liberating and just for all.
I'm going to motion to approve the agenda for today for this hearing.
I move.
There's a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two board members missing this morning, Frank Brown and Tom Janisak. For President's remarks, I want to remind everybody, this is a hearing on the proposal for referendum, and any comments this morning are based solely, your comments should be directed solely towards the referendum issue, no other issues at this point today. Before we go on also, I want to do, the bylaws, if you're not familiar with how the referendum runs, the bylaw requires certain timeframes and procedures. This referendum is as a result of a settlement between Slovadon Trendik and the Ocean Pines Association. So we have agreed, today is the first step in the process to have the hearing as required by the bylaws. A mailing has to go out with, that will include a brief statement from Mr. Trendik, as well as from the OPA Board, and we intend to have that mailing go out to the community no later than April 8th. The ballots will have a return date of May 13th, and the count of the ballots will be on Friday, May 14th, and the count will be done by the Election Committee. The Election Committee plays a big role in this process along with the Secretary, so they are actively involved in this process. So with that, we're going to give Mr. Trendik, since he, this is, he was the plaintiff in the case, and we're going to give him the opportunity to speak first for the community. And after, Mr. Trendik will have as much time as he needs after that, we're going to limit comments to three minutes per person.
Can you hear me okay? With mask, I'm not sure if I'm coming through all right or not. Slovadon Trendik, 20 Drobridge Road, also the petitioner. I want to first thank everybody for coming this morning. I know it's a beautiful day outside, and the fact that you're here inside as opposed to outside enjoying the flea market and whatever else you might be interested in doing, it speaks for how you feel about this particular topic, how important this is to you. Second, I'd like to thank all 880 homeowners who actually signed my petition. Obviously, they felt this was an important cause, and the fact that they all participated in the first stage, which was the petition itself, speaks for how they felt about the subject. I also want to thank many of you who have donated to my effort to raise funds to go through unfortunate legal process in order to protect our petition. This all this started two years ago, and we are finally sort of at the finish line. Petition is a very important vehicle to the membership, and that's why I felt it is necessary to preserve our rights as a members, to voice our interests, and to present to the Board and to the membership either a proposal or action, or in my case, a question that requires, if approved, changing the bylaws. Now, what I would like to start with also is something that's, I think, very important because many of us have not taken the time or had no interest to read our rules and regulations. As a former director, I had to do it, that was one of my obligations. So I'd like to just start with the following, which comes from what is a second document in the order of precedence in our association after declaration restrictions. I'm talking about the Charter of Corporation. Ninth provision of Article One in the OPA Charter states, quote, "The directors of the association shall exercise their powers and duties in good faith and with a view of the best interest to the association," end quote. Clearly, the Board has a responsibility to properly oversee all OPA common assets and critical infrastructure. OPA's multimillion dollar bulkhead replacement program is one example. And the members rightfully expect a full transparency and financial approach that is best for the association. So with that in mind, I would like to conclude my remarks, and I certainly will be able to make other comments later on as we hear from the membership here, either in form of a comment or a question. So I thank you for your time, and I thank you for your attention.
Okay, are there any public comments?
Good morning. I hope you presume you can hear. My name is Grant Halvey, I live at 1443 Ocean Parkway, and I've lived in Ocean Pines for 20 years, a little more than 20 years. I want to thank the Board, this Board of Directors, and all Boards of Directors for your volunteered service to our community. Those volunteer hours have brought many, many fine things to Ocean Pines over the years. But if memory serves me correctly, there's been a few failures of Boards of Directors over the years, and I'm just going to mention a couple. There was a time when a Board of Directors spent $900,000 to design a community center that never was built. There was never a shovel put in the ground after $900,000 was spent planning it. There was another Board of Directors who found it necessary to not show the cost of the fence around the sports court pool in order to stay within limits. The fence was built later by the, actually, a good neighbor donated the fence. There was another Board of Directors who spent about $500,000 on a golf course clubhouse, and then tore the building down and hauled it to the landfill. There was another that appeared to leave the cost of a second floor of the kitchen off of a referendum for the yacht club in order to make the cost of the yacht club appear lower than it actually resulted. So with these issues and others, I still love Ocean Pines, and I would love it more if Boards of Directors were to take a step backwards and address some more minor issues of the community, rather than just the ones that are mega million dollars. Now, except for plans being bandied around about the idea of us putting a, spending $2 million to spray the wastewater over the golf course, there's nothing that I see in the foreseeable future that would exceed a million dollars. But, so, it does appear that we should let the community decide on such issues that exceed a million bucks. So I'm going to vote yes on the referendum question, noting that a yes vote could lead to restricting the Board's spending limit to $2 million without Board, without community approval. And I urge the community to vote yes on the referendum. Thank you.
I'd like to address probably one or two issues on your comment. First off, I'm unaware of the $900,000 that were spent in plans for the community center, but that's another issue. But I do want to address the comment regarding the spraying of the treated water onto the golf course, where you said it's going to cost us $2 million. Well, that in fact is not the case. The cost to, for that whole process will be incurred by the county, and Ocean Pines will not be paying for that process.
Okay, that's, I appreciate being corrected on that issue, that's not my understanding from press reports. Thank you.
Again, you can't believe everything you read in the press.
Yeah, I'm sure about that. Thank you, sir.
The John O'Connor Two Doorwood Place down on the south section, been here 22 years. Just a correction, or just something to think about. Ocean Pines may not pay for that treatment on the golf course, but the water company is going to charge somebody, and who pays the water company? Thank you.
Are there other public comments?
All of us, faint 12th floor guy, and I hope you don't interfere and I get nervous. I got a few things to say. Unfortunately, I could not have come for the last nine months to the meetings over here. I don't got a computer to follow you people. And a lot went down, and I'm living 28 years over here, and I have seen a lot of things going wrong, just like the fellow who said. The yacht club, luckily we had now a good manager, general manager, that he helped us to get out that debt. That particular general manager wanted off with a million dollars in wages. And what we tried, what we doing for the $1 million, and let me thank Marty Clark and Trendik. We had Marty Clark, it's like the fellow say, they wanted to build a $6 million community hall in that time. You people spent the money on not the right way. So, but, I get a little bit nervous, but anyway, I got here, it's on pitches, that's those two. You all now want to set electric signs up to Ocean Pine. Are we going to make Ocean Pine Times Square? Why did we need that stuff?
Dutch, I'd like to remind you that your comments need be directed towards this referendum.
Yeah, well, that is what I say, you spending $600,000. I got here pitches on the 5th of December. Everything flooded. Nobody from you people came and cleaned up. But you're going to spend all that money and not doing the ditches? It's ridiculous. You know, we sitting here, we sitting in a bad time, and you keep throwing money away. We people living in a hard time. And it is like I say, I'm a little bit nervous, but here.
Are there any other public comments?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'd like to follow up with a comment since my opening statement. Something that was said by a gentleman that made a first comment led me to revisit one of the comments that was actually made by Director Perron at the last Board meeting, which was a week ago Saturday. In one of his comments, he, he made it possible that the membership should consider the referendum because this may have to happen every year, and it may cost $30,000. I have a different perspective on that, and I just want to help the membership understand that, first of all, I believe that doing a referendum in the case of Mr. Perron's example, he used the bulkhead replacement program. Clearly, this is a very important critical infrastructure to the membership. So I would be in favor of seeing, basically, the Board do a referendum and involve the entire membership, and let them know how the money is being spent. Because we're talking about a multimillion dollar bulkhead replacement program over number of years. They can, for example, put together a five-year replacement program with the estimates, and then using full transparency, basically mail things out to the membership, let them know how much bulkhead will be replaced over the next five years, how much is it going to cost, and let the membership approve it. It's fully transparent, everybody knows how the money is going to be spent. And by the way, that can be done at the same time that we do annual elections. So saving is tremendous, and the bylaws allow us actually to do that. So I just think, when we think about this, we should really consider voting for a referendum not because of these things that come up, which could confuse people, especially if we know there are solutions to that. Not having to run referendum every year, for example, and doing it during the election time, but really vote on a basic premise, what this is. And this is simply having the membership instill oversight over how our money is being spent if it's over a million dollars. And I think, you know, speaking as a homeowner, there's nothing wrong with that. It doesn't mean that we don't trust the association, that we don't trust the Board. It simply means that we want to know, if you're going to spend over a million dollars, what are you going to spend on? Now, if we have a strategic plan, strategic investment plan, that's all going to be laid out to us. We're going to know over the next five or 10 years what needs to be done in terms of major capital expenditure, what the price tag is, and then plan for that referendum. You know it upfront, and you bought into that strategic plan. You're aware that the money is going to be spent on the roads, or bulkheads, or bridges, or improving the yacht club, or improving the North Gate entrance. Boy, I would love that, it's a first impression when everybody comes in. So I hope you look at the referendum question very carefully, and vote based on the importance you have over how the money is being spent, our money. Thank you very much for the attention.
Right, so I'd like to address, are there any other public comments? Yeah?
How you doing today? Felix, 31 Brookside Road. I just moved here a few, couple of months ago, so I hear everybody being here for about 20 some odd years, and I thought it was really good to come over here and have the opportunity to speak. It's a good, it's a good association, it seems, and, you know, thanks a lot for the opportunity. And to have this public referendum is kind of nice as well. And the reason why I wanted to come up, at first I wanted to go sit in the back over there and kind of be quiet, you know, being new. But then I realized, I go, well, if I'm going to be here for quite a while, it's important for me to be over here and say something. And it's, to me, this is all about transparency, and it's about the opportunity to have the voice, not after the money's spent, but before the money's spent. And a part of that, it takes, it speaks on accountability, so that if I vote for something, and I don't like it later on, well, I voted for it, so it's on me, rather than talking about it after the fact of why didn't, why did we spend the money, and money's being spent, and where did the money go? But at least we know, at least we have a voice in it, and it's about inclusion and all that good stuff. So I guess from my point of view, I just wanted to thank the Board to have this opportunity, and to, for those people who just came in here, who have no prior experience on what has happened, when money wasn't spent, to be able to now come into a community that we could at least know that the money is spent for something that we had, that we were included in it. But for me, I would vote yes for the referendum.
And thank you, welcome to Ocean Pine. Yep?
Excuse me, my name is Jay Persky, and I live at 1461 Ocean Parkway. And first of all, I really do appreciate all the people that serve here, you're not paid for these services, and when you serve thousands of people, I know that part of the culture I grew up with was saying that if you have it, two of us together, you'll have at least three opinions. And I think there's certain truth to the idea that you have different people that are going to have different projects, and not that any are not relevant, but nonetheless, you're juggling a lot of balls, and I appreciate your willingness to do that. And probably at times, it's a thankless job. I have a question that I, would help me understand better this discussion we're having, and that is, this million dollars, this is written into our bylaws?
Not currently.
Okay, so it's a... I'm sorry.
Yeah, the bylaw, there is a limit.
There is a limit.
There is a limit at this point, 10% of our, I'm sorry, 20% of our assessment, the assessments that we collect on a yearly basis, and currently that number is about $1.8 million. So this referendum would permanently, for as long as this, unless there was another referendum, would lock that number into $1 million. So the percentage of assessment dollars takes into account the inflated costs as we move forward. As I was having lunch at the country club yesterday, I overheard a group of ladies talking about this, and their comment was, nothing's getting cheaper, everything gets more expensive. But yeah, we, this would change that 20% of the assessment each year to lock it in at $1 million.
When was that 20%? When was that established approximately?
2008 or 2009.
So it's been more than a dozen years.
That's correct.
And so when you take in, like you say, in account inflation, and you need to do that, sadly, you know, a million dollars isn't what it used to be.
That's correct.
Even a trillion isn't anymore what it used to be. So maybe this is a subject of how to establish a limit, if you have a fixed limit, to me it seems like, of a million dollars. And the way money is being spent, it's not hard to imagine inflation going up. Right now, it's artificially being held down. I think historically, you can only hold inflation down for a limited amount of time. You can keep throwing billions and trillions at it to keep it down, but eventually, that doesn't work anymore. So I think, you know, we may want to consider a more protective, I'm not sure that's the best word, but a more thoughtful way of setting it, rather than just freezing it, not taking anything into consideration for inflation or for deflation, because things can be deflated, doesn't happen often, but it's, in the 1930s, that's exactly what happened, and all of a sudden, a million dollars becomes a lot of money, and you don't have to spend it. So I don't know what consideration has been given on that kind of proposal, but I think that might be...
To address your question, that the bylaws currently outline what Board can or can do regarding spending limits on a single project. This referendum is to change that, there's no other, nothing else is under consideration.
So that's it? So it's either a million, or it stays the way it is?
Correct.
Okay, well, I would, I would personally say that I don't think it's wise to keep it at just a million, like I said, a million isn't what it used to be. It's a lot of money, and to have a vote on every time you need to do that, there may be a better way, and maybe we could be open to taking suggestions on other ways, maybe the percentage, maybe lowering that percentage, maybe, I don't know. You all have a better perspective, and maybe some of you, on how to weigh these things out, but I would vote against that.
Any other public comments? Yes?
Good morning, everybody. My name is Steve Stein, I live at 2 Grand Fort Road here in Ocean Pines. Been here approximately 15, 16 years. Two things, the bottom line is, we're here really to prevent this Board, or any future Boards, from giving them carte blanche to spend how much, whatever they want. So the idea is to limit that, whether it be a million dollars or more, then that's, you know, the way it is. But we just went through this, was it last year? I don't know. Anyway, when the yacht club got built, the new yacht club, the Board had spent more than it should have, or was allowed to, and overran it, and the same thing with the golf course. So more or less, unless you're held, you had carte blanche to a certain extent. I know you're going to say you didn't, but to a certain extent, you did. We're here to prevent that from happening in the future. The other thing is, I want to call your attention to an article that I thought, probably one of the best articles that Joe Reynolds has ever written. It's in, it was on March 25th in the Ocean Pines Forum, and anyway, he, let's see, the second paragraph, well, it's too long to read, I'm not going to read all this, but he refers to articles in the bylaws about getting mixed up with future, or spending millions of dollars on projects in the future, where, and then he's comparing with the bulkheads. The bulkhead is a thing that's been going on for years, and it's a, you know, separate type of thing that doesn't require, it might require Board approval for the amount, but if it's over a billion dollars, that's, you know, what it's going to take. It's not something that we need to have a all the anyway, we don't need to vote on whether that needs to be, it's in the bylaws that you don't have to have a referendum, is the word I'm thinking of, I'm sorry. You don't have to have a referendum to do the, to do the bulkheads. You don't have to have a referendum to do the, to do the bulkheads. It's, it's been going on for years and it's up to the board to decide how much they want to spend on it every year, but it's open to the public. It's not something that you can, uh, that's not available for us not to see. In other words, you can't hide that. It'll be upfront and it doesn't, there doesn't need to be a limit on that. So whatever the board decides on that is a different thing. It's not like a new project where you're going to build something and spend, spend millions of dollars. So, uh, just two different separate items should not be combined. So anyway, to keep the board from, uh, overspending, I reckon, I'm in favor of the, uh, of the referendum. So I thank you for your time.
Larry, could I just address a few points, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, good, good morning, everybody. I'm Jeremy Tucker, uh, general counsel for the corporation. Um, I just wanted to run over again what Larry said because I just want to make sure that everybody, especially new residents, there is already a limit contained in a cap on what the board can expend on a project in a given year in the bylaws. This proposed amendment would reduce and fix that number. So instead of it being a percentage of your budget, your assessment amount, it would be a hard number at one million dollars. So this is not creating a limit where there was no limit. This is reducing and fixing the limit. And so I just want to be very clear as what the effect of this amendment would do. That may be good, that may be bad, that is up to the membership to decide, but that's what the effect is. So we're not creating a new, we're not creating a, a cap where there isn't a cap. It is amending the existing cap as I indicated. The, uh, language of the amendment does not create carve-outs for additions, alterations, and improvements costing more than a million dollars need approval. It's any expenditure requires approval of a single project, over a million dollars requires approval. So that, I just want to make sure that we're, everybody's, has the, the language that is at place. So there are certain covenants out there for other community associations that will say that over additions, alterations, and improvements in excess of a million dollars or whatever the number would be require approval. That is not what this proposed amendment does. It is fixed at all expenditures for a single project, over a million dollars requires approval. Again, whether that's good or bad, I leave that to you. I just want to make sure that we all understand what the implications of the amendment is. And that, that same language is exist, exists with your bylaws now, but the cap of expenditures is a, a number that's fixed to your assessment amount, not a hard number that is frozen in time. So that is just the difference of what this framework is, the amendment would look like and how it would, it work.
And let me, let me address that a little further, particularly the article you referenced from Mr. Reynolds. Of course, he's responding, uh, his article is based on comments that I made at our last board meeting. I find it very interesting that the essence of, uh, Joe's comments are that, uh, uh, well, we can go ahead and, uh, and not do a referendum if we, if we do a couple of different contracts. Well, that's exactly what we're trying to avoid here. Breaking up, um, uh, breaking up costs just to fit it under a referendum dollar. That's, that, you want to talk about transparency, that is a lack of transparency. The, i- if you didn't see the board meeting last week, the example that I gave as the general manager was laying out our costs for, uh, bulkhead work this year, which will be over a million dollars, that if in fact, and, and quite honestly, it will be over a million dollars every year or more as we move forward, um, unless we don't do it, um, the, uh, those expenditures, as Jeremy just explained, would require a referendum every year. So, um, uh, the, the idea of, uh, that Joe laid out, if I read his article correctly, that we could break this up into a couple of different contracts, well, you know, Joe and somebody mentioned Marty Clark, uh, if we broke up, we decided to do a three million dollar project and broke it up into four projects that were under a million dollars, can you imagine the screaming that this board or any other board would hear because we broke it up just to be under a referendum dollar? Um, so, you know, Joe has his opinion, but the bylaws say what the bylaws say. This referendum would, would require any expenditure over a million dollars to be approved by referendum. I'd like to address a couple of other issues that Mr. Trendic brought up. Um, he talked about oversight. Well, the biggest oversight that is available, if the community thinks the board is improperly spending their money and is to vote those individuals off the board, that is the ultimate oversight. He, he also mentioned that, um, some idea of a five-year plan and then the, the community approving a five-year plan. Well, Mr. Trendic may not understand that this board or two boards ago, uh, approved a process with DMA to do a complete study of all our assets in this community and to do a depreciation study. We have a plan that this year is again being updated that reflects what the cost of everything in this community, how long it will last, how much money we need to put aside, um, to cover that, that depreciation. And that includes every bulkhead in the community, every road in the community. So if you're, if you're curious as to when your street is supposed to be redone, we have it. We know when it's going to happen. So that is already in place. Um, the, uh, and as, as I said, that survey was done four years ago and it's being updated this year, um, uh, to reflect the current, uh, the, the, the current amount for all our new, uh, uh, new property and, uh, the existing properties. So are there any further public comments?
Steve Stein again at Two Grand Fort Road. Uh, uh, I want to know why you think we have to have a referendum, which you referred to every year for a bulkheads. It's in the budget, it's established. It's something that's, uh, they shouldn't have to have a referendum for, it's there. So, uh, and, you know, you're, you're saying that we're going to have to have a referendum every year. I don't understand. I'd like you to explain the why.
Well, I think, I think our attorney just explained why, that the wording is, in the, in the bylaws, any expenditure over a million dollars requires a referendum. It's that simple. Joe may disagree, but it's that simple. A referendum would be required...
This is a different thing. This is a bulkhead, it's totally separate from...
Doesn't, that doesn't matter. There's no differentiation between putting up a, a building over here or replacing the roads or replacing the bulkheads.
Then I suggest you put that in the bylaws.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Different.
Thank you. Doug?
Yeah, just, you know, for public consumption, and I'm, I'm glad Jeremy mentioned the fact that there is a limit in place already. You know, it's twenty percent of the assessment income for that particular fiscal year. I think the other part of the percentage that makes sense of using a percentage is that also, we talked about inflation, but it also takes into consideration the time value of money. It allows us to make sure that as things change in the economy, we can address and adjust, uh, as necessary. Uh, with the, with the spending limit, and, and Jeremy, you used the word fix, and I hope people understood the word fix means a, a level. You said it's going to fix the issue. No, it's basically going to set a fixed limit for spending. Okay? I just want to make sure that you clarified that.
Thank you.
But the other part of it is, for example, and I think the bulkheads is a great example, and that is, we're talking about usually the contract is, uh, over a million dollars for any one year. So if we started to, as Larry men- mentioned, if we started to break it up into pieces just to fit it under the referendum, uh, we would be scrutinized, you know, as being somewhat nefarious, somewhat, uh, less than transparent. And that in and of itself causes a whole nother set of issues. The ability to, uh, to, uh, enter into a contract, which is different than the gentleman here said, well, it's in the budget. Well, just because it's in the budget really doesn't mean anything. It's when we enter into a contract and commit to an expense is when the rule of the, you know, how much the limit we can spend on any one particular project comes into play. The good thing about having the ability to, uh, be able to do and not being restricted by that, say for example, with the bulkhead, once we go to a contractor, we can not only lock in labor rates, but we can lock in material rates too. It, it allows us to keep those costs controlled. So if we had to have, let's say, for example, uh, I think Larry, your example was, all right, it's three million dollars, we're going to break it into four separate things that we stay under the referendum. As each contract we enter into, we are at the risk of the labor rate going up and the material costs going up. So there's a benefit in allowing us to create a contract with, you know, with a vendor in order to protect those costs. And also, I wouldn't want to be on a board that says, we got to, you know, twenty-three ABC Drive, we stopped at the bulkhead there because we didn't have enough money, we were restricted by the, uh, by the spending limit, and now, you know, we couldn't get to their, next person's bulkhead for another year and that causes some damage. Let's say it, it, it results in some kind of catastrophic failure there, you know? We're creating a scenario that we can easily avoid. Uh, I don't think spending money on the bulkheads, which has been done over many, many years. Let's, let's not forget, we've not had this limit in place and people who have lived on the bulkheads are, you know, getting their bulkheads replaced at the, at the rate that the reserve study dictates. And I think so far, they've been very happy with the fact that, that the bulkheads have been maintained. I for one would not want to put in a restriction that allows us or prevents us from actually reaching the community, the members that need that kind of stuff, only because of this concept that the board is quote unquote overspending, you know, its authority. I, I think that's a misnomer and quite frankly, um, I would just people, ask people to consider A, the effect that a limit would have, B, the preservation of time value of money, and C, the protection of costs going forward for projects.
And I, I would like to add too, um, that this idea that the boards are hiding spending, there's nothing further from the truth. Every expense that, unless it's an emergency expense that pops up during the year, all of these projects are vetted, starting with our budget and finance committee, then, uh, during the budget process, again with the budget and finance committee, and then with the board in hearings. Those hearings are open. Uh, community members are welcome to participate. You can go back and review everything that has been discussed for this upcoming budget. Um, you know, there's, there's nothing hidden, uh, that this idea that the boards are hiding things and then going ahead and spending huge amounts of money, it just doesn't, it's just not true. Uh, in the back? Need to come up front.
Tom Melton, thirteen, don't know. The question I got is the twenty percent, what is the collection per year? I think you said one point eight million. Is that roughly what it is?
Yeah, we're, the twenty percent would be about one point eight million of it. We, we collect, uh, I think last year was what, ninety-eight?
Yeah, we're, we're, so on the monthly board meetings, I always report on where we are with assessment collection. And right now, we're at, uh, about eight point nine million, which is about ninety-eight percent of the budget.
But I'm looking at the collection per mon, per year is one point eight million, right?
No, 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 no. Eight point...
Yeah, it, so based on the assessment, you know, for...
Right.
Individual homes, lots, you know, estate lots, water lots, we end up with the total amount that we expect to collect based on those rates. And then this year was nine point two, three million dollars.
All right.
And that changes year to year. And that's another benefit of the percentage.
That's all.
Um, there was an implication that the community is saying that the board's hiding expenses or something like that. I haven't heard a word out of the community that we think that the board is hiding any expenses or anything. It was totally unnecessary for you to point that out to us. I certainly don't think the board is hiding any expenses. I admire this board. You guys all volunteer your time and talent and experience for our community. God bless you for it, you know? I, I've been here twenty years, I never did it. I mean, I never, I never paid my dues to sit in your seat and take the heat. But, um, so anyhow, that was unnecessary to point that out to us. But, um, I do want to speak to the idea that the bulkheads as an example. There, if this referendum passes, uh, there would not be anything in, that would prevent the board in the future from doing a referendum that planned for something that had expenses over a million dollars over a period of years. That's not, that, this referendum would not limit that. It's a very bad example. In fact, it might be a good example of how you, how the board could live with this referendum and still achieve things like the bulkhead that has an expense that exceeds a million dollars a year. Just do the referendum. So the question, it simply comes down to, do you want to check it, check with the community before you exceed a ref, uh, a million dollars on a single expenditure? I think you can achieve it with the referendum in place.
Can I add one thing just so we're clear of what the referendum means? A referendum is not a check-in with the community. A referendum, if it goes to the community, the project would have to be approved by a majority of the ballots cast. So if the majority of the ballots cast, for whatever reason, voted against the project using the bulkhead example, even with the existing cap, then that expenditure would not be permitted. The board would only be able to expend up to whatever the expenditure limit is. So currently, right now, it's twenty percent of the assessment amount. If it was the one million, the board would not be able to exceed the one million dollars. Okay? So I just want to be very clear what the referendum means. And we already have that process in place and would be the same implication. But what a referendum means is, we're not notifying the community of a project. The board would have to go get the, the approval of the community for a specific project. And if that's what the community wants, fine. I just want to make sure that we're all using the correct terminology, that this isn't a notice obligation. This is an approval, seeking approval obligation from the membership. And so if the project in the bulkhead, using it for example, even under the existing limit, were rejected, yet what would, that would mean is, if the referendum were rejected, is the board would be able to expend up to whatever that number is, but not above that number for a single project. That's what the implication is. Just want to make sure everybody understands.
I'm sorry, Jack?
John O'Connor, Two Dogwood Drive. From my perspective, I don't see this referendum as restricting the board on anything. It is just saying that should anything come along that costs more than a million dollars, come ask us if it's okay to do it. So you could have the majority of the residents as opposed to four members of the board making decisions over a million dollars? Thank you.
I'd just like to follow up on this topic because I really think it's important. I think it's important for the board, the management, and it's also important to the membership. When you think of the bulkheads and roads, those are two extreme examples, unlike other common assets. Yacht club, bridge, country club, we have sixty-six miles of roads. We have over a hundred thousand linear feet of bulkhead. Now, if you look at, if you go back to, uh, the point made by one of the board members, we're talking about a single capital expenditure. Now, a single capital expenditure is not one foot of bulkhead or a one mile of road. That is, that is an infrastructure piece in our community that is depreciated and funded as, as a whole, but it's done in individual projects. Because out of the sixty-six miles of roads, maybe this year you need to do one mile, next year, ten miles. It's still a same expended capital, it's same asset. Same thing with bulkheads. And that's why in the bylaws, we actually now have a language. And we've had it since two thousand and eight. And that language was precisely designed to give board the flexibility in a case of assets like... assets like roads and bulkheads. You can do it in phases. Okay? Because one phase might be one mile of road, and the next phase might be five miles of road, as long as you contract individually for each of those phases. So the board does have a flexibility. The bylaws provide that language. It comes down to simple transparency and advanced planning, whether it's for a current year or whether it's for a five years, because obviously, we need to know that. We need to have financial projections, we need to budget properly, we need to collect the money that we need. The board is obligated to collect that money from us, based on what they know the needs in the future are going to be, whether it's next year or the next five years. So, you know, it is kind of not necessarily very easy to decide and understand the topic because it is very different from a single asset like a building versus 60 miles of roads. But anybody that wants to chat about it, to have more information, more clarity, you're welcome to call me. I'll be happy to sit down and have that conversation with you. Thanks for your time.
Any further public comments? Sir?
Sorry, but I'm back again. Steve Stein, number two, Grand Fort Road. My question is, I don't know if it's a question of what, but if the homeowner's fees go up every year and they've borne up, I don't know, what is the figure from last year?
$10.
$10. Seven?
10.
10. Seems like mine went up much higher than that. But anyway, for whatever reason, the homeowner's fees continue to go up, and you're taking a 20% out of the total, grand total, and that grand total will continue to go up. Even though it's held at 20%, it's giving you more spending money to, to spend on projects. And we don't know what the future's going to bring and how much our homeowner's fees are going to go up in the future. So there, in that way, there's like, it's another way of spending more money for projects if you continue to raise the homeowner's fees. I don't know who has control over that. I guess it's the board. But is that based on the budget of the board has, as to what our homeowner's fees are going to be, whatever the budget is, and that's what we're going to be assessed?
Yep.
Okay, but, you know, they could continue to go up, which gives you more spending money. So that's all I'm trying to say.
Are there any further pub comments?
So you wrote this?
Name and address, please.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. Kathy Robbins, 64 Whitehorse. My parents bought a house here 30 years ago, and they've passed, but my siblings and I still have the house. So you wrote this referendum? Okay. What made you choose a million? Why didn't you drop the percentage from 20 to 10%? I, I don't like the hard value.
That's, that's a fair question. I think it's a very good question. Two years ago, when this, when this effort started, I was approached by many homeowners. It was at a time when the board approved demoing down the old clubhouse, I mean golf, golf clubhouse and, and golf barn. And at that time, I left the board, resigned from the board to focus on, on a referendum and on a petition. And people that were calling me basically suggested that I should really set the limit for the future capital expenditures, so that the membership has a voice into how the money is being spent. So 1 million came as a suggestion by many people in the community, owners like yourself, myself included. I felt 1 million was a fair, because I looked at our, our assets, and I looked at what was already done, and I looked at what could possibly happen in the future that would create a need for this kind of a referendum. And unlike some of my former colleagues, I feel that the tools that the board has available within the existing bylaws allow us to handle the situation related to the bulkheads and roads smoothly and in a transparent way, especially if we do it on a multi-year kind of a planning cycle, which is, I think, a smart thing to do. And, and we do have management really that does feel that a multi-year budget planning is, is a very, very good way to do it. The, the, so when I looked at what was already done, and I, and I thought, okay, what could happen in the future that would, you know, really trigger issue of 1 million dollars and requiring membership approval? I know the board used one example as a kind of a worst case, which is the bulkhead, and I, and I explained how that can be handled with the existing bylaws. But let's look at the other extreme example for the sake of what if? Let's say the board decides to buy a, a lot, an empty piece of land, and it costs 1.6 million dollars. Right now, they have a power to do that. The membership really can't do anything about it. They are staying below the spending limit threshold, which is 20% on the annual revenue, equals about 1.8 million dollars. They can spend 1.79 million dollars on a piece of land and not have our input. I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong. It might be a smart thing to do if it's a piece of land that we need, but what this referendum provides is really for the membership to have an input on that. So yes, it is extreme, but we also know in the past, there were pieces of land that were available that past boards have contemplated of possibly acquiring because they felt it was a smart thing for the association, and I'm not saying it is not. All I'm saying is, you know, you look at, you got to look at both sides of the situation and then decide in your own mind, you know, how you feel about the proposed reduction in the spending authority down to 1 million dollars. And that's really what it is. It's not like, it has nothing to do with handcuffing the board, current or future boards. It has to do with just simply giving the membership an opportunity to have a voice in any capital expenditure that exceeds 1 million dollars. That's, that's all. I hope I have answered your question.
Doug?
Yeah, a reasonable explanation, and I, you know, I certainly follow that. However, I'd also offer for consideration is that if the, this limit was in place and that same said piece of property costs $900,000, the condition you, you know, you just described would still exist.
Frank?
Yeah. Let me point out one other thing. Let me talk about three aspects of this and address specifically Grant Havel, your, some of your comments, as well as some of Steve's and some of Slabodan's. I think you got to think about unintended consequences. Okay? Certainly, we can project what bulkheads are going to be out five years in the future, and we can run a referendum, and I suspect it would pass, and then we could start collecting money for it. And how many of you have been around when we had the five-year plan? And then we could stop bulkhead construction like it was stopped a couple of years ago under a general manager, and then we're collecting money for something to be done, and we're not doing it. I don't think we want to go down, we've been down that path before. It's pretty ugly. I don't think we want to go there again. The other thing, the objection, main objection I have with this referendum is there still exists a bypass mechanism that I believe Joe Reynolds very clearly explained, where I could go out and I could build another yacht club by doing it in phases and being under a million dollars. And yes, we can get a citizens group, and that group could challenge us in court, and who knows how that would end up, but I don't think you want to go there. And it gets down to basically, do you trust the board or don't? Because when I first moved in here, it was after the referendum for, for the yacht club, but before construction started. So I didn't get to vote in the referendum. The first thing that I faced as a homeowner, long before I thought of getting involved in the board or OP politics, was a $500,000 change order because the kitchen equipment couldn't be used. Guys, I worked my way through school as an ironworker. In 40 years in construction, I have never met a construction manager so goddamn dumb that they would say you could reuse that equipment. That boils down to basic honesty. Okay? So think of the unintended consequences, five-year plans potentially, people using the bypass mechanism to do what they want to if you elect a bad board, because that still exists, even with this limit.
Are there any further public comments? It, it seems that I'm not in this bulkhead category or user, but first of all, we know, my wife and I, probably at least five people who live in different communities, very close to here, and their assessments are, at the minimum, more than double, triple, quadruple. You know, one that's quadruple, and they don't even have these amenities. So to me, it seems like they're, again, this is just from a narrow perspective, my perspective, that they're used rather well. If people want to abuse the system, there's nothing you're going to be able to write on a piece of paper that's going to stop them from using. So I think it does come down to, I don't know how often the elections are for board members or what's involved in having a board member, member removed, but ultimately, it comes down to that. And I, I understand, I'm not a construction person, but I understand enough, like when you say a bulkhead, you have a fixed limit, and you go so far, and you stop building because that's where the money says, where you stop, and the next one butts into that, you, you could really undo and cause a lot of additional expense just because you've frozen, you know, tied the hands of people doing work. So I, I think ultimately, a lot of this does come down to us as a community, looking at what's going on, which is hard. We're not here to do that, most of us. We're here to live and enjoy this beautiful place. We're here to use the amenities as we so choose, pay as we go, which I think is great. So I don't, I don't mind if they spend money on pickleball, even though I don't play pickleball. But you're paying as you go. So, you know, to me, it seems like it's done in, in a pretty equitable way and on a cost-saving way. And so we can monitor what's going on. Maybe there's a better way of getting information about or on a more frequent basis, maybe bi-yearly or quarterly, and, and then keep that in mind when it comes time to voting that board members. And hopefully, you know, we can trust what these people are doing. Like I say, I, I appreciate you doing it, and I would hope many of you are, too, or else maybe you need to be up here. Ma'am, do it. Comment back there.
Okay, I'm Paula Marple. I'm at 18 Poplar Trail. Couple things that are, that are kind of an undercurrent, and I think one of those is trust, and it's been mentioned a couple of times. I don't know if it was just from audience members or you, but there have been boards that we were not able to trust because they turned out to be not trustworthy. And so it is, it is not that, I don't think, some people here may disagree with me, that we do not trust this board. The problem is, we have been burned, and we have not been able to trust former boards because we got burned. So when we're talking about a referendum here, and to me, one of the worst things was you resigning from the board. Because overwhelmingly, as soon as you announced your indication to do so, I voted for you and went out and told everybody I knew to please vote for you. So I was, I was so upset when you chose to resign, but I could also understand it. So anyway, I think it is very important for us to have a voice. And that is, again, not because we just don't trust this board, but because there have been others. Frankly, you need to earn our trust. For some of us, you're not just going to automatically get it. And I think one way you could do that, earning the trust of not just people here, but all those other people who didn't come, who later complained about where their money went and why this was spent, and don't make the effort to get here, you would be earning our trust. And the example keeps coming up about bulkheads. I'll tell you what, you put your money into taking care of these drainage issues that are all over Northgate and Southgate, with us looking at instant water view property that turns into swamp and mosquitoes, and you're going to end up having all kinds of people later in the future going, you know what? Let's not in any way make this a million. You want to spend whatever it takes to clear up these drainage, drainage issues? By all means do it. But no, for this kind of things that keep coming up, I think it's very realistic for all of us to have a voice. That's what it's about. We're supposed to be a democracy everywhere, and yes, we should have a voice. Thank you.
Paula?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with you that having a voice is, you know, what this is about, why people are here. The referendum is not an efficient way to have a voice, in my view. The engagement of the membership in coming to our monthly board meetings and receiving the very detailed financial reports put out by our treasurer, the very detailed project updates and operations updates from our general manager, provides a great deal of transparency about exactly where your assessment dollars go. Our discussions in our public meetings about spending requests, whether they're small requests or large capital requests, are ways for the membership to receive the information that we are making transparent to the public through our open meetings process. Our budget process is an open process. The public is invited to attend the Budget and Finance Committee meetings where the budget is analyzed in, in detail and discussed in detail, torn apart and put back together in detail. The public is invited to attend the board budget hearings where the budget, again, is discussed in detail, torn apart in detail, and put back together in detail. This board last year committed to having, having this board and future boards hold public town hall meetings. We have had public town hall meetings that address themselves to major spending projects that address themselves to a variety of issues of interest to the membership. When I hear this transparency being repeated over and over this morning, the converse of that is secrecy, and I think... And I think I'm taking exception to the implication that we are receiving, sitting here, that you are saying that we need transparency. The implication is that you believe there is not transparency. And I take exception to that because we, you know, as has been pointed out by many of the speakers this morning, we as a board are volunteering our time. We are sitting in meetings, having conversations with the public in meetings and outside of meetings to make all of the work that we do as transparent as possible. We do not aim to hide anything about the work that we do, the money that we are approving for spend. So, you know, I'm just saying that the, I think the more important thing here is member engagement on a monthly basis rather than once every two years. As Mr. Trendic pointed out, this has been a two-year process to come to this point today. And this issue has been under discussion all of that time. We have not seen a room full of this many people on this topic or any other topic more than maybe once or twice in the three and a half years that I've been on the board. So I appreciate your engagement and your interest, but I would venture to say that the referendum process is a very costly and lengthy process. If what you're wanting to achieve is transparency, that there's a much more efficient way already in place for that transparency to be there. And your voice is always welcome on any of our major or minor capital spending projects or our capital improvement project. Thank you.
Yes, there has been the words trust, there's been the words transparency. It really is not about trying to criticize the board in front of us. Okay? I mean, I.
Yeah, I realize that and I'm not taking.
It just isn't. It's just that it's an overlapping effect. Because what you're, what you're unfortunately receiving, which may not be fair, but it's accurate, is that there were former boards who were not trustworthy. There were former boards who were not transparent. And the community felt they got burned by it and didn't want it to happen again. And, you know, there's, and the people I talked to, they're like, I don't even use the golf course. I have never been to the yacht club. I'm not talking about myself, although I don't golf. But people who say all the time, I will talk to my neighbors or whatever, and they're like, I don't go golfing. Husband doesn't go golfing. I've lived here for 20 years. I've lived here for whatever, never been to the yacht club in my life. And so, you know, they've, they've also been there for the times when, yes, they should have been more engaged. Because if you're going to not be up in arms that the fact that a yacht club is being rebuilt and going to have all these major improvements and it's going to cost this amount of money and you don't even go, then yes, it's kind of on you. You didn't get involved and there wasn't the engagement. I agree with you that that's what's needed. How do we make that happen? I don't know. I don't know how you convince people to be more engaged. They're living their lives. There's more people here now who have made their lives here. So they're busy living their lives and going to work and having different hats and they're busy and they don't get involved in all of that. And that's a shame, but you only have so much time in a day. And there they are. And they're the ones who are the ones who aren't using all these things, but they are the first ones definitely to go out in their backyard and go, after every single rain, what is going on and why aren't they doing something about it? So, I don't know, now I feel like I'm rambling and I'm sorry, but I was just basically saying it isn't, it isn't this board. It isn't to be adversarial. It's just frustration.
Yeah, and if I may respond, you know, I don't take those comments as personal to this board. This board has received. This board has received a lot of very positive feedback on the work that we've done.
Right, but before I spoke up, you said you did.
And this is not, this is not to blame anybody for not being engaged. I realize that people are very busy. And I can tell you that I'm sitting here at this table because I was upset with the board that I didn't trust and I chose to become part of the solution. And, and here I am. But what I will, what I'm trying to get across is that there are processes in place for our governing documents for transparency that the board uses continually. And so, you know, the implication being that when people are saying we need more transparency, that somehow there's not transparency. I'm just trying to say, there is transparency. Not personal to this board, but personal to our governing documents, putting those transparency procedures in place.
And just like those folks who are not here today and are not retired and don't sit down and go over all those documents, it's the same thing. It really is. I mean, you just said you're surprised or something that you said, that you were glad to see so much involvement. Well, this issue got the involvement. And so I guess if you're going to have, you know, an issue there, you'll get involvement. You come up with something where you're going to talk about the drainage issues in Ocean Pines, let's see how full the room is.
Kami.
Yeah, just one last comment about this. When I look at the referendum question, it is very specific in stating that it is a million-dollar cap. And certainly in forming a bylaws addendum or a statute of any kind, we call it the plain meeting of the language. And if we think we can dissect off certain parts to say that won't be subject to a referendum or this won't be subject to a referendum, anyone could really take issue with that. Because any spending over a million dollars would be subject to a referendum. Now, I appreciate all the comments that have been made here today. And like Colette, I really hope that we see more of you at the board meetings and that if you can't attend the board meetings, that perhaps you could turn into the YouTube channel or the Facebook page where, where the meetings are broadcast after the fact. And certainly, I have answered many, many, many emails and received many calls and I'm willing to do so. I think all of us up here are willing to do so. But just an interesting fact, I had heard, and Larry pointed it out at the beginning, I had heard that the referendum was expensive and I thought, hmm, I wonder how expensive it really is. So I went over and talked to the postmaster because I really, I really wanted to know. And what I found out was, when we send all of the mailings out to you, they include postage on the outside envelope, postage on the inside envelope, the cost of printing and the cost of having legal review, if we need legal review, it's close to $30,000. So let's just play that out a little bit. If we have bulkheads that are going to cost over a million in that year, that means we have to come back to you every year. Phase it in, phase it out. If it needs to be done, it needs to be done. And that calls for another referendum. And that's another $30,000 that you're paying for this, which you don't have to pay for if you allow us, because you voted for us, if you allow us the liberty of taking a percentage like, like we have. It isn't broke right now. I think that you have told us all to be very cautious and I think, I appreciate that. I certainly appreciate seeing you all here because this is the kind of thing that makes a community work. So I, there is a lot to be considered here and when you get your ballot, I hope you'll think about it. I hope that you will, if you still have questions, that you can call upon your neighbors, you can call upon us and we can talk about it. So, thank you, Larry. That's all.
I just wanted to point out one other thing that probably hasn't been mentioned today is that, and I read it somewhere or someone raised the point, but, you know, should there be some catastrophe that occurs and spending would be above our 20% limit, that, that does not require a referendum. So for example, if we had a hurricane here and it, you know, blew one of our buildings apart, you know, we still had to spend the money without our insurance, we would, the board would still be able to spend that. So this does not apply to emergency-type situations like that. Ma'am, you had your hand up in the back.
My name is Aaron Steinberger. I live at 16 Sandpiper Lane, been here about six years. I just want clarification about the process of the referendum with what you just said. Using the large expenditures like drainage issues, road issues, bulkhead issues, is it not possible to put out a referendum that says, you know, the, the cost of the project is in excess of a million dollars? This is the cost over a period of years. So you guys can lock in the contractor costs, material costs and all, and get your contract going, but we have one referendum at a cost of $30,000?
Well, you know, let me address that. You know, one of the, this whole issue, you know, the bulkheads are a perfect example of why, you know, I don't, I don't think this referendum should pass. But let's just talk about that for a second. The, the price per linear foot for us to do bulkhead work has skyrocketed. And the, if anyone here has tried to do any construction work on their own and buy a two-by-floor, you'll see that the prices have gone through the roof as well as labor, driven by scarcity as well as scarcity of material and, and labor. So there's not a, there's not a contractor out there that's going to lock in doing bulkhead work for the next five years on a contract. That's just not going to happen because they can't predict the prices next week, let alone five years down the road. And I, again, someone was discussing this with me yesterday and said, this individual runs a business that does construction work. He prepared estimates for a client and this was a multimillion-dollar project. The guy said, well, let's wait, you know, another four months and then let's get back together. This is recent. He got back together, they reworked the numbers and the price went up 24% just because the escalation in materials. So this idea that we can lock a contract within for five years, it's just not feasible.
I thought it was kind of discussed earlier at the meeting that you sometimes have contracts that go over a certain period of time.
No, ma'am, we, we've locked for the bulkheads for this year. It's locked in for this year and that's it. It's not for no further.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other fact about our bulkhead program is it's, it's actually a 30-year program. It takes 30 years to do all of our bulkheads. And so how it gets broken out year by year is based on need, the condition of the bulkheads that are expected to need replacement in that year, but also based on how much, how many linear feet of bulkhead you would need to do in order to maintain that pace, to get everything done in 30 years.
Okay, thank you.
Any further comments?
John O'Connor. I have another appointment, that's why I wanted to get up and get out. Seems to me we're getting far afield here. Conversations about more participation, about the budget. It's a simple question. Come that people vote for anything over a million? That's the question. Not a question of trust, it's not a question of anything. Let us determine what Ocean Pines should spend if it's over a million dollars on a project. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the back.
My name is John Uter, live at 59 Abishire Road. To me, it seems real simple, simple math. Everybody here, or at least the majority, you have a fixed mortgage instead of a variable mortgage. All we're asking from you is anything over a million dollars, you've got to come to us and we've got to say yes or no. To me, that seems real simple. Because right now, when was it voted in 20%? When was that voted?
2008.
All right, 2008. So I wasn't around it. I've only been here five years. But I think it's real simple. Just anything over a million dollars, you've got to come and say something to us. And I'm sure you're still going to get the majority to say yes. And the shame of it is, I agree with you that in every meeting, because I belong to different clubs, you only have maybe 10% of the people in a club that show up for meetings and do the thing, the work that needs to be done. Only on special things do a lot of people show up. So yes, it'd be good if more people like us would show up more often and hopefully maybe in the future they will. And it's greatly appreciated because you're doing this on your own time and you're not being paid to do it. So that's greatly appreciated. I don't think anybody here is thinking any bad thing on any of yous. But as some people have stated before, you've had some past board members that, that just didn't do what was expected. All right? So it's greatly appreciated when you step out and say you have the Ocean Pines people in mind. So that's all we're asking. So what I mean, to me, it seems like simple math. Most people have a fixed rate mortgage instead of a variable rate. So all we're asking, a straight million dollars, if it's over that, you've got to get our approval.
Any further comments?
The lady said, you know, it costs us $30,000, $40,000 for the way for hand. Again, when we won with 880 votes and the advisor told you he was wrong, could we not have thought on it when we vote for the people for the election, put an extra piece of paper and write up what the question is? We would save $30,000. You all have listened to the wrong man. That's my opinion. And, and what the guy said about the one $5 million spending, did you all realize it happened seven, eight years ago here when we had a manager put a contract out on a piece of land without you people knowing? And we was lucky that somebody else put a higher price on it. That was what's done without anybody knowing. That is why we complaining.
Any further comments?
Steve Stein again. I just wanted to, most of the board members seem to think, and maybe it's true, but I've been to a lot, a lot of board meetings and not this year because of the virus and that's why a lot of people have not been here. So you're not seeing a full, and maybe people don't even want to come today because of the virus, just don't want to be involved with, you know, getting close to other people. But I've been here in the past, other board, other years, and this room has been full, packed. So I don't go along with there not enough people coming to these board meetings since I've been here where I, a lot of people have to stand in the back because there's not enough seats. That's not true.
Any further comments? All right, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for your time and your participation today.